Twenty-three meeting of the Esau Meadow Planning Board to order. Is there anybody in the audience who might be recording this meeting? If so, would you please state your name? Again, is anyone in the audience recording the meeting? So please state your name. Hearing none, we can move forward. So Planning Board members and attendants are Bill Fonseca, myself, Russell Denver, Cassie Cherswell, and Rob Terrell. We're joined by Bailey Mitchell and Nina Fazio from the Planning Department. So the first order of business is the approval of the September 5th, 2023 open session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the September 5th, 2023 open session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay, none. Approval of September 19th, 2023 open session minutes.
Move to approve the September 19th, 2023 open session minutes.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed. There are no one opposed. So the first order of business is case SPRW-2023-27. Mr. Terrell?
Case SPRW-2023-27, request for site plan waiver for JB5 Ventures LLC DBA Mahi Threads, home office at 69 Smith Ave., Assessor's Parcel ID 15C-17-88, located in the residence C zoning district applicant James Boucherot, 69 Smith Ave., Esau Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm James Boucherot.
Hi.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do there? Simply just a home office. There'll be no merchandise stored there. All the product is printed on demand. It's all shipped out of North Carolina directly to their customers. So it's an e-com business. I have an LLC. I just want the name of the business to reflect somehow tied to the LLC.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve the request for site plan review waiver for home office at 69 Smith Ave.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Matter of passage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item?
Right. Case SPRW-2023-28, request for site plan review waiver for Treasure Liquidation, Inc., a retail store at 169 Shaker Road, Assessor's Parcel ID 18-11A-0, located in the industrial zoning district applicant Asafa Rashid, 5 Belmont Street, Westfield, Mass. 01085.
Hi.
Hello.
So just for the people who might be watching on TV and the people in the audience, just kind of give us a flavor where the location is and what you plan to do there.
Yeah, the location is going to be on 169 Shaker Road, Esau Meadow. It's a treasure liquidation, pretty much buying return for like major stores in the US like Amazon, Home Depot, Target. So all those returns or shelf pools, I end up buying them and just sell them for like 30% of retail. So if the refrigerator is for like $1,000, I'll sell it for like 300, and so on and so forth.
What would your anticipated hours of operation be?
It'll be from 10 to 6, except Thursdays.
And Thursdays would be?
Off for restock.
Okay. Amount of truck traffic that you would anticipate for that site?
See, that's me and my partner, we're actually debating on that. So so far, we're getting at least like two trucks a week. But it depends on the high value of customers. That might increase or decrease.
Okay. Are they tractor-trailers? Are they?
They're eighteen-wheelers.
They're eighteen-wheelers. Other questions from the board?
Is this going to be an in-person store or are you shipping out?
No, it's going to be a retail store. It's going to be for customers who actually can come in.
Physical, face-to-face?
Correct, yep.
Before I ask other questions, any other questions from the board? So the amount of parking, how many spots are there currently?
I believe there are about 14-ish to 16-ish.
Is there a loading dock associated with this building?
There are no loading dock, but they're on the side of the building. There's a big door. And we bought some lift pallets so we can actually raise it, get into the truck, get the pallets, bring it down.
There's a fair amount of small businesses right along there, and Shaker Road's heavily traveled. How do you see the trucks coming in? Are they going to come in in the middle of the day? Are they going to come in early? Are they going to come in late? Because we're concerned, obviously, about the amount of traffic and the traffic that might be restricted to those other small businesses.
So the shipping is definitely going to be before 8:00. So expecting shipping from, you know, 5:00 to 7:30 the latest. And then the good thing about this store is that there is a big space in front of the store, so the trucks trailer can come in on this, like into the driveway, cut right in front of the store, not holding any traffic, and it can just reverse on the side of the store. And the truck trailer can stay there like literally all day without anybody being held up on the traffics.
All right. All right. No other questions. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the request for site plan review waiver for a retail store at 169 Shaker Road.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That matter passes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
I'd like to propose that we take the request for special permit site plan review for the construction and use of an indoor self-storage facility at 275 Benton Drive out of order. Do I have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to take the item out of order.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Let's raise our hands.
I'm one of the owners of 265B Benton Drive.
Yeah.
Would this affect my business at all or anything like that?
Well, we haven't gotten into the hearing yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay? That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get there before any other issue.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. So all in favor of taking it out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So Mr. Clerk, do you want to call the matter?
Yep. So it's going to be, okay. So go to be case SP-2023-07 and case site-2023-04, request for special permit and site plan review approval for the construction and use of an indoor self-storage facility at 275 Benton Drive Assessor's Parcel ID 10-20-5, located in industrial garden park zoning district applicant 275 Benton LLC, Caro Bacon and Wilson, PC 6 Southeast Street, Amherst, Mass. 01002.
Do we have representatives from the petitioner?
We do.
Why don't you set that up over there? More people will be able to see it.
I'd just like to make it known on the record for the board, I actually am an owner of the facility. It's unrelated. It's not local. It shouldn't have any conflicts.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Coyle. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bacon Wilson, representing the applicant today. 275 Benton LLC with the principal owner CJ Bardy here with me, who owns various other facilities in Connecticut and Rhode Island and working on one down in Florida. We also have Glenn Martin from Design Professionals, Inc., as the senior project manager who can discuss the plans in greater detail as we go through this application.
So can I ask you just to turn that a little bit so the audience can see it? Thank you. All right.
Great. And I don't know if you want to maybe hand these out to the board. We do have some color plans to hand out to the board as well. And if it pleases the board, I'll go through an overview of the application. I know that you guys have all received it already. What I'd like to do is kind of highlight where we've been, where we're at, and then for the technical aspect of it, I'm going to let you speak with someone a lot smarter than me, and Glenn's going to handle that portion of the presentation. So as you are aware, the subject property is 275 Benton Drive, which is currently an undeveloped lot. It's located in the industrial garden park district. As this board is aware, a recent change was made to the zoning bylaws to provide for, define, and define an indoor self-storage facility. I know that this board worked in concert with this applicant, as well as others, to develop that definition and the locations. So an indoor self-storage facility is allowed by special permit in the industrial garden park district. The applications before the board tonight are both an application for the special permit and an application for site plan approval. The highlights of the special permit application, the site consists of approximately 2.55 acres, of which 1.9 acres of the area is proposed to be disturbed during the construction. The site will include a three-story building consisting of approximately 20,250 square feet per floor, for a total of 60,750 square feet. There is two full access driveways that are proposed. There are 10 parking spaces that are proposed, as well as are included in that 10 is one handicap accessible. The facility will house approximately 500 units, with the third floor consisting of 195, the second floor consisting of 195, and the first floor consisting of 106. All the landscaping, lighting, signage, and site infrastructure, which Glenn will talk about later, will comply with all of the local and state regulations. This particular project has a proposed number of customers per day of between 0 and 12, depending upon any day of the week. Probably a little bit more activity on the weekends than during the week. Number of part-time employees, between 1 and 2 for the facility. Hours of operation with regard to this particular location are from 6:00 AM until 9:00 PM. The days of operation are seven days a week. The hours of delivery are between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM as well. This will be a 100% climate-controlled building. It will be 100% sprinklered, and it will be 100% automated with key card access and keypad access to the facility. There will be cameras at the facility, both interior and exterior, that are able to be viewed live, as well as recording to the cloud. The applicant did meet with the Conservation Commission last week and received approval of the project, with two modest conditions, including no work or disturbance closer than 10 feet from the wetlands, except in the drainage basin. And once the limit of clearing is identified for the project, Conservation Commission wants to come out and take another look at what trees they want to take down as part of it. Review by all of the other departments within the town only yielded a few minimal questions between, or by the Water and Sewer Department and the Department of Public Works, which the engineers have addressed and will talk about a little bit during their presentation. There was a traffic study for these types of uses typically show that it's minimal impact on traffic. And there's an average of approximately seven car trips per day per 100 units. That's about 35 for this particular project. Believe that the proposed findings that we submitted within the application address all of the issues that are satisfactory to the, or should be satisfactory to this board, and that it meets the criteria for the special permit. I can highlight those for you, or just address those and any questions that you might have later on, as there was an extensive submission together with that. There is a request for a waiver of off-street parking associated with this as well. While there isn't a defined number of parking spaces associated with this particular use, we believe that 10 spaces, one of them being a handicap accessible, is more than enough to handle any of the traffic and parking that would be necessary. So I'm going to turn this over to Glenn. He's going to highlight some of the aspects of the plan, and after that, we can answer any questions you have.
For the record, Glenn Martin with Design Professionals Landscape Architect. I was just reviewing the site plan with you. The storm drainage will be split in half. From about midpoint of the building, the front half will be directed towards the filtration basin in the front. The remainder will be directed towards the back of the building and picked up at a couple of catch basins. It also leave off here, directed into the larger water quality basin in the rear corner. And peak run rate through the proposed development would be less than exist. Attorney mentioned, we have 10 parking spaces here. One is handicapped, and two entrance drives off of Benton Drive. And the entire facility will be fenced in, security fence all the way around. We have allowed for snow storage areas. Snow storage will be in the front in this area here, also over here, and along fence on the north and south sides. For you proposed utilities, we're proposing to connect to our utilities in Benton Drive. That will include underground electric, underground gas for climate control, water for domestic and fire service. And one of the comments from DEW was for fire service. We will be showing it for fire service. And sanitary sewer was all connected to Benton Drive, will have at least a two-foot of cover on that proposed sanitary line. That was the other comment that DEW had about the proposed sewer line. So we will have sufficient coverage. All onsite material will be utilized. Some import may be required to meet the final grades of the project. We will work that out as necessary. As I mentioned, fencing will go around the entire perimeter of the site. It will be six feet high, chain link fence with two sliding gates at each entrance. For plantings, we're proposing shade trees along Benton Drive, 35 feet on center maximum. And also a screen of barber vitis along the proposed fence line right there, which will help to screen the new building. And we also have plantings at the corners of the building, foundation plantings there and there. Those will be low evergreen shrubs and perennials for some color. Also plantings at the parking area, two shade trees at either end, and also some tuners underneath those. For the basins, we are proposing a lot of plantings, native shrubs and ornamental trees around the basin. And also along the back slope of the driveway area. And those will include like viburnums and other native shrubs. Also along with that, we'll have a seed mix on the slopes and also around the entire basin. And the seed mix will include pollinators such as goldenrod and black-eyed Susans, which is good for the wildlife in the area. For lighting, we're proposing wall packs on the building. No pole lighting at all. And those will be LED lights, 18 feet high. And we believe that's sufficient to cover the entire development. And they have a nice slim profile, and they're dark sky, full cutoff pictures. So at this point, we can take any questions if you have any.
So let's just focus on the lighting.
Sure.
Will the lighting be the top of the building facing down? Will you have three sets of lights for each floor? How is that going to work?
We have a building, lighting, lights all the way around the buildings, building, yeah, 18 feet high. They're shown on the lighting plan in your set. That's CLT1, I believe. And yeah, just one light at each location and about midpoint of the building, I believe.
How tall is the fence surrounding the property?
Six feet tall.
And what type of material do you plan on using?
Chain link.
And how far are you to the closest residential property?
Well, this is an area on Davis, welcome.
I want you to tell us.
Oh, I couldn't. That's one sheet, 80 feet. So the entire area is all industrial. So yeah, over 100 feet, I would imagine, and there's no residential in that area.
I do not believe any of the direct abutters to the property are residential at all. It's all commercial or most of it's commercial or industrial in that entire area. Not aware of any residential properties in the immediate vicinity.
Other questions before I open it to the public?
So I'm looking at the last line in this. The project will benefit the community and its appropriate development of the site. So you have to bear with us, you realize this is the fifth one. So we've got a lot of storage here. I'd say a conservative estimate, this would be 250,000 square feet, that would be in Esau Meadow. I mean, the extra space has been here for about a year. They're 50% off move-in specials. They have lots of open units. Storage rental is America next door, lots of open units. Esau Meadow, same thing. There's a lot of open units, right? So that being said, my concern is that we put 60,000 square feet, 500 more climate controlled, which is a specific niche, units in town. I don't want that to be something where it doesn't rent up or it sits idle for a while. So that's my general statement. My other statement is if it does sit idle for a while, what's the length of time that that can be sustained? Three years, four years before it's fully rented and comfortable to continue to run on a daily basis? I realize there's minimal employees. You're talking 15 hours a day. It'll be open and a part-time employee, so largely unmanned, so limited jobs, which is okay. But I mean, again, I'm more concerned about, you know, there's a lot of things in town that are vacant, right? And I just don't want to see this go down that same path with the fifth one in our town, right? Just thoughts on that.
Yeah, sure.
For the record, the other facilities locally are over 90% occupied, all of them. Each one of those are also non-climate controlled.
Extra spaces.
No, it's not. There's no climate control, Esau Meadow, zero.
Okay.
The overall square footage is less than 200,000 for the entire five-mile radius. The most recent facility that was built was, I think it's all, is it all-purpose storage?
Extra space, which is climate controlled. At the end of Baldwin Street, that was the last one that was put in.
Yeah, that's not climate controlled, but I'll talk about that later.
On the website, it is.
That was 60,000 square feet of complete drive-up the day it was built. I think it's changed hands a few times, and the last time I saw it changed hands was over 80% occupied. This is the only non, this is the only climate-controlled facility in a five, almost 10-mile radius.
Oh, what, Brad? While you're thinking.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we just spent a year dealing with a warehouse not far from there, and the truck traffic and issues like this. So how big are going, how big are the units going to be? And does that facilitate any tractor-trailer access to use any of those sites?
It could run a trend. We've had fire truck and tractor-trailer simulator run through the facility, and it can...
No, I mean, would the units be so big where you would have tractor-trailers unloading their product into the units?
Well, if somebody's moving and they had a moving company move them and they use a tractor-trailer, sure, they could certainly back a tractor-trailer. From my personal experience with the other facilities we have, there's very, I'd say maybe twice a year at each facility, there's a tractor-trailer that backs in there.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. So this is a public hearing for case SP-2023-07 and case site 2023-04, and the board members, President Phil Fonseca, Russell Denver, Cassie Cherswell, and Rob Terrell. So this is the opportunity for the public to be heard about the applicant and the proposal before the board. Anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this matter, please come forward and ask your questions or make your statements.
You're going to have to come forward. We have microphones up here, so.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Anthony Chisano. I manage 265B Benton Drive, which is going to be adjacent to this proposed property. And we have seen a lot of changes in that area. I was just wondering what traffic flow as far as coming off of Benton Drive and pulling into my building and the building and back, if it's going to be affecting that way as far as cars going in and out of that facility? Because I do have oral surgery patients coming in from about 8:00 to 5:00 PM. And then in the back of my building is also another building, which is a very busy flow of people, such as seeing orthopedic surgeons and a lot of other medical facilities, including taking blood. And I see a lot of people coming in and out. I just don't know if it's going to hold up anything pulling out of Benton Drive and pulling onto this, this street right here. And then there's tractor-trailers there, or there's cars parked, or people waiting to get into the facility. Well, I got people coming out and in, and is it going to get backed up onto Benton Drive at all? And it says 0 to 12 people during the day. That's fine, but it's just, you know, is it going to be a busy flow? Because that's a large property right there. And is there going to be trucks going in and out all the time, dropping off certain products, large products, tractor-trailers? So that was my only concern with that.
So you heard, so I just want to repeat what they said. They said 0 to 12.
Yeah.
A period of time, was it 6 to 9?
Correct.
6 to 9.
Yeah.
And the petitioner indicated very few tractor-trailers, primarily busiest on the weekends.
Yeah, and I'm only open 9 to 5 on Monday through Friday, so that's good. I do have an emergency basis, but those are few and far between. That's all. I mean, that's, I just want to make sure that that is the proposed plan and not something that is operating all the time.
Yeah. So if you were to find that they were in violation of their hours of operation and otherwise, then a call to the zoning enforcement officer. They would be able to make an inspection and determine whether they were in compliance or not. If they weren't in compliance, they would be able to issue a notice to be in compliance, to stop being out of compliance. And if they fail that, then there's court actions that are available.
Okay. I mean, that's all I just wanted to express my feelings. Can I take one of these?
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Could you sign in by chance?
No idea.
Could you please do that? Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter? Come forward, please. You need to sign in, too.
Do I stand right here, though?
Sure.
So other than the impact that it would make for the owners financially and the financial gain that they have, what would that business actually help the town? Seeing as we already have three storage units, have you guys looked into if they're at full capacity? There's lots of empty space with them. Like, how would a fourth storage place help the town in Esau Meadow?
You mean, for all intents and purposes, the other facilities are relatively full. So if you wanted to find a 10-by-20 unit, neither of them have them available, last time I checked.
Okay, so I was wondering, so just, just storage, then? There's no other, like, community impact?
No, we're not parking RVs or boats or anything of that nature.
No, but positive impact?
A positive impact. Well, it's a piece of dirt today. We're going to, you know, we intend to develop and put, you know, put a higher tax base on the grant list. It's a crapshoot, right?
Okay. Just curious.
Can you, can you sign in? And then state your name and address for the record.
Charlotte Dabacki, Cortresa.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter? I'll say again, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Hearing none, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion, which am I at now?
Just close the healthcare.
There we go. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Just a follow-up, and I appreciate that lady coming up and asking that. So I just, I want to, I think going back to my original question, two things. Did you have a feasibility study done?
Yes.
Okay. What was the rentable per square foot, they said?
Might have pulled up my phone.
Absolutely. I hope, I want to. I'll take a time. Paid by the hour. Kidding, we're not.
Some of us are.
All right. On the net rentable square foot basis, let me just give you some, just numbers out here. In a three-mile radius, there's 135,000 square feet. Based on the last, so the 2020, 2023's square feet, foot per capita in a three-mile radius was 2.56. That's why we're here.
So can you explain to the audience 2.56?
All right, so I guess in the simplest terms, you're in the storage game as well, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Like industry, I think, you know, like in a market, let's say three to five miles square area or circular area. I think the market is balanced at like somewhere between, say, seven to eight, could potentially be nine square feet. Orlando, Florida is probably a little bit higher because it's a little bit more dense. There's just more people in an area. So to put it in perspective, this East Long Meadow market in a three-mile radius currently has, per capita, has 2.56 square feet.
Of storage space.
Correct.
Okay.
What happens if you go out to five? Because you're going to be tapping five, right? Because you're going to go Long Meadow, you're going to go Hampton Wilbraham.
So there's nothing in Long Meadow.
Yeah.
The next closest one is across the border in East Dunfield as you get closer to 91, which is over five miles. I think it's almost seven miles.
Okay.
And did Hampton ever resolve their court cases involving storage?
Still pending.
Two years now? It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Wow.
Well, just in general, sure, it's a dirt lot. Doesn't add a lot of value to the town. One and a half, you know, employment opportunities is not a lot of value to the town. However, it's an allowed use under the zone. You know, I go back, way back with economic development in this town. I remember when industrial parks were meant for industry and not for storage units. Unfortunately, I will vote in favor of it because it is an allowed use, but certainly wouldn't be my dream use for that property by any stretch of the imagination, so.
Last, only last question, just to follow up from where we originally started, just, and I will, I'm not trying to rake you over the coals. I just, I know this business and I just want to make sure for our town, which has seen a lot of different things. That's why I joined this board, was for reasons to just vet out things to make sure, as was discussed. It's an approved use, right? So we're not in the market of trying to bounce people out on opinion, right? I just want to make sure on the record, we've discussed everything. And I don't know if this, the plan is to build, sell, which some do, I don't need to know. But if this does, for 500 units to come online, specifically climate-controlled only, is a very niche group, right? And anybody out there can look and rent a 10-by-10 for X dollars. The climate control will be substantially more. It's smaller, it's obviously more expensive, right? So it is a niche group that you're trying to pinpoint. If this doesn't rent up for three or four years to get to your sweet spot of 60, 70% capacity, is that sustainable, right? I don't know, right? And that's my fear, is that this thing sits at 150 units rented for three years. Because again, I'm not, and I'm not going to compete, but I will tell you, look at some of the websites, which I did this afternoon. Extra Space on their website has climate control and they're vacant. Storage Rents of America has vacancy. East Long Meadow Storage has vacancy. Toy Box is the only one that doesn't have online capabilities. Those three have capabilities to rent right now online. So Mike, again, my concern is that this thing sits for three years unrented. Like, what happens, right? Is it sustainable?
I mean, the product that we're offering is substantially different than the other competition in the area. There's no, you know, there's no, Storage Rentals of America is self-storage 1.0. There's tried and true drive-up units, which are great, right? But, you know, we live in New England, so we have seasons and we have a nice, you know, humid, you know, late summer going into, then we change to cold, right? That changes, you know, those temperature changes drastically impact furniture that's sitting inside a non-climate-controlled unit. You know, from personal experience, I mean, I've got, I've had furniture in my own facility in a, in a drive-up unit because I had no climate control available.
Right.
And, you know, the dressers were tossed, worthless after a season.
If it doesn't rent up, and I get that, I get.
If it doesn't rent up, then, yeah, we have a problem on our hands in three or three to five years, right?
That's exactly where I'm going, right? So if you've got 500 units and this thing costs blank millions to build, and you're looking from where you are with our other facilities and you say, this isn't working, what happens, right? I just, like we mentioned, there's a warehouse in town. We don't even need to discuss where that is. But there's things in towns, this town, that are just sitting there, right? And that we just don't, we want things to thrive, right? We want this, we're trying to redevelop this, the center of town and so on. I know this is tucked back, but I just, I realize how hard it is to rent 500 climate-control units, right? Again, from.
Over a, over a period of time of, say, three, like three to five years, it's not. And from my personal experience, over the last nine years, eight years, that's not a lot of units to rent up at all.
Well, and the due diligence, I'm sure, I mean, he's, this is a huge investment, right? Nobody wants to invest in something for it to fail. So he's done due diligence in order to find this spot, to find this location. And the goal is for everything to succeed.
Yeah.
Right? And if it doesn't, then Plan B is going to come into play. But if I had a crystal ball and could say, how many would be rented or how many wouldn't? We would have won the lottery the other day.
Yeah.
I'm not a billionaire, and hopefully it's a successful.
And we looked at other opportunities in town. Another building, there was an existing building further down Benton that was closer to Storage Rentals of America. Long story short, it didn't work at the end of the day with the sellers and us. Looked at another opportunity in an existing building on Industrial Park Road. Problem there was it had butted residential, and it's just not going to fly. Came in and talked to you guys about that early on, and we just didn't want the impact with residential. So we, you know, found this as far from residential as we could possibly get with the opportunity.
Last question, I'll leave you alone. On that pro forma, what did they assume your lease-up time is going to be?
Eighteen months would be somewhere around 50% occupancy.
And is that sustainable?
Yeah.
For you?
Yes.
Hey, other questions?
Forty and say 60% is the.
Any other questions? So Bailey, just a procedural question. So it's a site plan and a special permit and a waiver within the site plan. How would you recommend that we vote?
I would do a motion for the site plan review with the waiver, approval of the waiver for parking regulations.
And a separate vote?
A separate vote for the special permit as well.
So I do have a motion.
First this one?
It's kind of, it's not in there, but.
Oh, it's not in here.
It's kind of in there as one motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the request for special permanent site plan, site plan review approval for the construction of the, use of an indoor self-storage facility on 275 Benton Drive.
With the requested waiver?
With the requested waiver?
For parking?
For parking. Yeah, okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now on the special permit. I have a motion.
So just again, for the special permit.
Okay.
So skip the site plan.
Make a motion to approve the request for special permit for the construction and use of an indoor self-storage facility on 275 Benton Drive.
So I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposition, say nay. Hearing none, out of passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, why don't we jump up to you?
Yeah, I'd like to hear you read that. We're on these.
Then I can't screw this. No, that's okay. No, I thought it was.
Go ahead. No.
Go ahead.
Read. All right.
Read.
Ready?
Yeah. All right. Case Z, I got the right, ZN-2023-08 for the proposed amendment of the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, subsection 450-3.3, table 3-1, schedule of use regulations to include backyard hens, petitioner Town of East Long Meadow, six square, 20 centers square, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028.
So this will be a public hearing. I'd like to, David Gardner in the audience? Let's see him. Is David Gardner out there? Okay.
Trust you, I'm going to read it on first.
David, have a seat.
Here.
Get to you in a second.
Okay.
So we're going to try to do some information for everyone in the audience and those people that might be paying attention on LCAT. So first, I'd like to read what the proposed language is that would be added to the zoning ordinance. I'll ask Bailey, our planning director, to do that.
All right, so in a memorandum from our building commissioner, David Gardner, dated August 2nd, 2023, to the town council and the planning board, the proposed bylaw amendments related to backyard hens, background. The desire for many homeowners to keep a flock of hens has increased significantly over the last couple of years due to the ever-increasing cost of fresh eggs. The Town of East Long Meadow currently has no clear, unambiguous regulations for the keeping of hens on regulate, or, sorry, residential properties. Current regulation of the practice is handled on a case-by-case basis by the town's animal control officer and an approach that can and has produced unpredictable outcomes and unhappy butters. The adoption of concise regulations for the keeping of hens will provide a clear compliance path and an unambiguous basis for addressing related complaints. Recommendation, town staff recommends that the town council and planning board amend the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, Article 3, Use Regulations, Chapter 450-3.3, additional use, dimensional and density regulations to include five backyard hens. And Table 3-1, Schedule of Use Regulations, to include number 12, backyard hens under G accessory uses. The purpose of the amendments is to allow by law, or sorry, by right, keeping of a small flock of hens on occupied residential properties of at least 10,000 square feet in size. A waiver of site plan review or a site plan review from the planning board would be required for the keeping of a small flock of hens on any lot less than 10,000 square feet. The attached documents include one, current language to be repealed, indicated by red strike-through text; two, proposed language to be added, indicated by underline text; and three, current language to remain, indicated by black text. No omission of current language, there is no need for such language to be amended and shall remain as is. Respectfully submitted, David Gardner, building commissioner. Onto the proposed regulations. So under Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 450-3.3, additional use, dimensional and density regulations, subsection B, residential districts, double A, A, B, and C. Insert five backyard hens. A, the keeping of a small flock of hens shall be allowed as of right on occupied lots at least 10,000 square feet in residential districts, double A, A, B, and C. A waiver of site plan review or a site plan review from the planning board shall be required for the keeping of a small flock of hens on any lots less than 10,000 square feet. B, as you, or, sorry, as used in this bylaw, a small flock of hens means no more than 12 female chickens, hens, kept as pets or for the purpose of providing eggs for use by residents on the property on which the hens are kept. C, any building or enclosed use to house or confine the flock shall be located in the backyard portion of the lot, no fewer than 25 feet from any side or rear lot line, and no fewer than 25 feet from any building used for human habitation. D, hens shall be provided with fresh water, clean feed, one nesting box per six chickens, a roost bar, and security from predators. E, feed shall be stored in rodent-proof containers, and all waste materials shall be properly disposed of. F, the keeping of roosters is strictly prohibited. Onto the use table. By law, or under, sorry, under G accessory uses, insert number 12, backyard hens. Under standards and conditions, see Chapter 450-3.3, a waiver of site plan review or a site plan review from the planning board shall be required for the keeping of a small flock of hens on any lot less than 10,000 square feet. It is permitted within all the residential districts, A, double A, A, B, and C, and not permitted within any of the other districts. That is.
Good evening. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Sure. Can I stand up?
Sure.
Yeah. So Dave Gardner, Town of East Long Meadow Building Commissioner. I've been here for a year and a week. And still learning about the town and finding out things. Still, a lot of things, you know, prompt these. Well, I'll write to this. What brought this about? Within the first week I was here, I got three phone calls. One was about somebody moving to town and saying, well, they want to have chickens. What are the regulations? So that was my first learning experience, like, what are there? What do we have? I heard that what was available was the animal control officer of the day, whoever that might be. You called the police station, they would put you in touch with the animal control officer, who would then come out and decide what it is you want to do and if it met the standards of best practices from the state. That could vary from site to site. There's nothing in the bylaws about it, nothing else regulating that. It was a totally subjective evaluation, perhaps, by a person who was an animal control officer. So the idea being that, like, all farm animals, chickens, had to be controlled in some manner. But what, one of the callers was really looking for was information, definitive information. No definitive information that I could give her except to say, call the police station and they can put you in touch with the animal control officer. Number one was, why don't we have any regulations in town? And I know the word regulation scares people because it's like, you want to do what you want to do, and regulations mean possibly that you can't do what you want to do. But I want to point out that in constructing this bylaw, first of all, in East Long Meadow, there are two residential districts, three if you count elderly district, that do not allow currently agricultural uses. Now, I was told that East Long Meadow was a right-to-farm community. It's not. That's, it is, it is not. It should be, and that would be great because, but it still wouldn't solve this problem. Right-to-farm applies to farms, actual practicing, commercial farms of more than five acres. So if somebody's a farmer, the whole idea, the impetus for right-to-farm had to do with eliminating frivolous lawsuits. eliminating frivolous lawsuits from abutters of farms who were bothered by dust and noise and odors from a farm. They said, you can't, sorry, you can't do that. That's not a basis for complaining or suing a farm, because, you know, farms, as long as they're adhering to the normal practices of a farm, you could not sue them for that. It has nothing to do with neighbor, you know, properties that are primarily residential use, that are keeping animals like hens. Now, they're very popular now. I mean, I was on the zoning board of appeals in East Hampton two years ago, for eight and a half years, and this issue came up there. We were successful there in clearing that up by adopting a backyard hen bylaw, so everybody knew where they stood. And that kind of started, got the ball rolling, you know, for a lot of communities. There was, it was that long ago that people started becoming aware that, well, eggs from your animals are so much better than what you could buy at a grocery store, for one thing. And now, eggs are really expensive. So it's come around again to where, you know, there's a lot of interest in people having hens. Well, they said in two of the residential districts, you can't do it. This proposal allows that. All residential districts can have backyard hens. So maybe, now what I've been hearing is, well, there are a number of people probably in here that have hens already, and roosters as well. So one of the other calls I got was about the noisy rooster next door. What can you do about it? Well, call the police, animal control officer, go out and see what they can do about it. But there's nothing to work on. You know, it's odd, because in our bylaws, there is a noise regulation, there's something about noise. I don't know if y'all have discovered this, but it doesn't say who enforces that. It actually doesn't. It's popularly believed that the police department, you know, does that. But that's not the case. Noise is noise. And police might go out and say, well, in fact, the blueberry farm was using a cannon. And there were complaints. We got the complaints. Police went out, story was, I wasn't there, but the police said, well, it's a farm, we can't do anything about it. You know, sorry. And that's how it goes. But that is a, I believe that's like 28 acres or something?
Six.
That's a real farm. I mean, right? So, but what about if your neighbor was using a cannon to scare off something from, you know, in their backyard? Could you do something? Absolutely, you should, but I don't know who to complain to. Sometimes I handle some noise complaints just by talking to people, but there really is no basis for me to be actually doing that, or anybody really in town, until we assign it to somebody.
So David, so, so the impetus was, you've had a number of--
Number of calls.
Complaints, number of issues that you've had to deal with over the course of the year.
Yeah.
It's, so for anyone who currently has hens--
Yeah.
--of any amount--
Yeah.
--in town--
Yeah.
When, if this passes--
Yeah.
And I want to tell everybody, this is only the first step. This is a recommendation from this planning board. It would go to the town council, and the town council has final say on whether this is adopted or not. So this is a recommending board with respect to changes to the zoning amendment. So would anybody who currently has a flock of hens, and this were to go into place, would they be grandfathered in?
Yeah, I believe that would be fair. I believe that that would be appropriate.
Well, I'm asking legally, are they grandfathered in as a pre-existing non-conforming use?
You, well, so that depends, like so many answers, it depends. So in Massachusetts, 40A, if you, anybody familiar with that, about zoning issues for enforcement, there are two stages of, well, there's the statute of limitations. So if somebody's had hens, roosters, whatever, for more than 10 years, and during that 10-year period, there has been no effort by the municipality to enforce anything about that, statute of limitations would apply. In that case, legally, yeah, there would be a, in a sense, that's grandfathered, right?
But you're talking 10 years. I'm really, I'm really talking--
It won't last that long.
I'm talking someone, I'm talking a hypothetical.
Okay.
Someone started a, had a, I don't know if it's flock or group or whatever of hens. Let's say they had 13 of them.
Yeah.
Okay? And this bylaw passes the town council. Are they grandfathered in at the 13, or 15, or 17, because it was in place prior to the passage of this amendment?
It would seem so, yeah. But how do you, how do you record that, right? So there's people, like, I'm thinking about the home trade bylaw, right? So that people had home trades, and then there was a provision for people to, and that expired at the end of 2008. All right, so there was an opportunity for people to, essentially, I think that was a special permit, is the way it was written. But something much easier than that, not a special permit where you have to, but rather register all of these now to be grandfathered moving forward, some kind of process, would be fair.
So the next question I have, anybody that currently has a lot size of 10,000 or more--
Yeah.
--this does not impact them?
It depends on what zone they're in.
Residential zones.
Well, residential, there are two residential zones where agricultural uses that we're looking at, you know, on the use table, since agricultural uses are allowed in, first two lines of the use table. So if you have more than five acres, it's allowed in every zone for a principal use, a primary use. Five acres or under, it's only allowed in agricultural uses, which is what this is. It's only allowed in R double A zone, RA zone, not in RV or RC. So it really depends. And the zones don't necessarily designate the lot sizes. You can have an RA zone that has a, a non-conforming lot, or you can have an RC zone, perhaps, maybe that has way more than some of the zones. So I'm just using this table, saying, currently, in the RV and RC zones, not allowed. So just trying to get the, the proposal allows it in every residential zone.
Okay, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah.
With at least 10,000 square feet.
10,000 square feet and under 10,000 square--
If you're up to this board.
Site plan, review, or a waiver.
And that's capped at 12?
Capped at 12, but that's, that's negotiable. I mean, honestly, the real, I never got complaints about hens. I got complaints about roosters.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
Yeah.
So, can I just give one overview also?
Sure.
This entire process starts with this board. And the purpose of having these public hearings multiple times throughout this process is so that we can make changes to the original proposal. It's not just going to be what it is right now. So your input will be heard, and some changes can be made. It's not just going to be this. This is just a starting point.
Yes. So talk roosters.
Roosters. Well, okay, so a little background on myself, because I've been made aware that there were some comments on Facebook about--
Forget about Facebook.
I know, but--
Talk about roosters. Where did roosters come into play?
For the purpose of whoever was doing that. I grew up on a small farm.
Roosters.
Roosters.
Roosters, period.
We had chickens, we had all kinds of animals, goats. When my kids were growing up, we had hens in the backyard. Well, one of the hens turned out to be a rooster, and this was, I don't know if you know the story of Ferdinand the Bull, but--
Roosters. Let's focus on roosters.
Looked like a hen until one day it started crawling, and when my neighbor complained, we found a home for Ferdinand. So there are places for roosters. My thinking, when you, what's that?
Let's just, can I, can I ask?
There are ways to deal with, if you're really attached to a rooster. Now, what I'm hearing is that roosters--
David, you're not hearing anything. What we want to hear is, how did roosters come to be in the proposal?
Because I get complaints about roosters crawling next door and keeping people up.
Okay.
Noisy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, we're going to get to everybody. We're just trying to, just, people. People. People, please hold it down. Everybody's going to get a chance to talk.
I'm just telling you, that's the question.
David.
Telling you, yeah, that's where it came from.
Just trying to get information out for all of you to kind of understand where it's coming from, trying to get what might be some of your concerns and comments answered before we open to public hearing. Okay.
People complained.
Okay.
About the rooster.
Well, you can ask that question when you come up and talk to the board, instead of just yelling it out. Okay.
There's a process.
David, don't answer the question. Don't answer the--
So, so that's where it came from.
Okay.
Now, also, I've worked in other communities, same complaints surfaced there.
Okay.
Roosters are very unpopular with many people, actually.
Excuse me.
One second.
One second, ma'am, please.
Ma'am, just, just wait a minute.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Soon.
So that, that's where that came from.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to bring it to the board. Any, board have any comments, questions, before we open it to the public?
Existing roosters, how would those be handled? In the same manner?
Well, I, that's up to the board.
Okay.
That's, I'm just making a proposal. The main reason, another main reason for doing this is to get, just codify the arrangements so it can be, we know what it is, and it can be enforced, possibly, if it comes to that, something.
Thank you.
Yeah.
David, we look in, so 10,000 square feet for the lot, right? So that's my simple math, it's a quarter acre, yeah, just under a quarter acre.
Yeah.
Are we presuming that's the entire footprint, or just the backyard? And who, also, who, like, who's going to enforce that piece to? I mean--
No, just the lot itself.
The lot itself.
Lot itself. And that, that is speaking to, having worked in some communities where there was, there were whole neighborhoods of 10,000 square foot lots, and it was a big problem. You can imagine, and lots aren't that large, and there's a lot going on, and a lot of room for complaint. So just to give the board some, to be able to look at whatever the situation is, like, what's on the lot, how much, whatever you do, you know, when you do that.
And just because this is going to be put in for this, or backyard referring to not visible from the street, or is a side yard, what is the intent with the backyard?
Just going by the, the charts that are in the, in the bylaws, you know, yeah, it designates, you know, the rear plane of the house, behind that is the backyard, you know, doesn't matter. But I think the setbacks and the distances from dwellings is important, because that, that brings in some of the health regulations, in a way, and that, so there's no conflict there, so.
Any other questions? So I'd like to open this public hearing to the public.
So I'm going to go away now, right?
Sure. Don't go too far. Don't go too far. So there was that very nice woman who wanted to come up, where is she? So we'll let her be the first crack at it.
What if they have a question? What if they have a question, ma'am?
I know, I know.
Well, we told them not to go far.
I know.
Okay.
So, you know, I'd like you to address the proposal, you know, keep your comments to the proposal, that would be wonderful. And please be respectful of, of the presenters and others, and especially this board.
Absolutely.
And then make sure, whenever you come up, state your name, your address for the public record, and then please sign in so that we have it.
Sign.
Yep, you're good.
Sign more than once?
No, you're good. I'm just stating for everyone, so I don't have to do it again, hopefully.
So Charles Jabecki for Teresa Street. I guess one of my questions is, and the woman was trying to ask, is how many people have complained? If there's a small percentage of, like, 1% of people complaining, versus all of the people that have chickens and are currently living with this, and all of the current neighbors that are currently listening to the hens, the roosters, and so forth, if it's a very small percentage, I can't imagine uprooting an entire town and making people upset and angry, and feeling all the negative feelings that they're feeling with everything else going on, with all the other things going on in our town. Like, I just don't see this being a big fish to fry, in the pot of things to be frying, if there's only a few, like, there's three examples that were listed. And the way it's sounding, I think, to a lot of people, is that there isn't a large amount of complaints for this to have been a problem in the first place. When it comes to the benefits of having a rooster, I'm not sure if you're educated with it, but the rooster's whole job is to protect the entire flock. When it comes to the flock free-ranging and doing anything like outside of a chicken run, there's huge benefits to our entire town. They control ticks, they control bugs. Like, we have a huge tick problem in our state, in our part of the country. Having chickens, and having a lot of them, more than 12, is doing a huge benefit to our town. The few people that are complaining could hopefully possibly be maybe educated, and be given information about the benefits that they're receiving, without any, doing any work. Like, I understand that it's annoying to listen to one. I had a rooster, we chose to eat him. His name was Chicken Soup, we foreshadowed. Like, it was, it was fine. My son made the decision, we looked at it as livestock. But I'm not everyone, and there are some people that rely on those roosters to keep those chickens safe, because we have a fox problem in East Long Meadow, too. And I personally have had seven of my chickens picked off because of a fox. Had I kept my rooster, regardless of how my neighbor felt, I probably would have a few more chickens right now, and a child that's a lot less upset about the fact that we have headless chickens in our backyard, because that's a rooster's job. So I feel like if you're going to allow chickens in the first place, taking the part of the chicken that actually, like, creates the whole life cycle, as well as their protector out of the mix, kind of just does an entire injustice to even allowing us to have chickens in the first place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fun to talk about.
House likely to be heard on this matter?
I think, you look ready.
You took your hat off and went like this, I bet he's ready.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, we sign in, be professional.
My name is Stephanie Pish. I live at 37 Helm Circle, East Long Meadow. My, like, I have a couple things. First thing is the 10, 10,000 square feet thing, there's just, here you are. There's a lot of, like, properties that are, that are smaller than that. Like, my house is 9,148 square feet, I had to look it up today. And, like, we keep our chickens, like, very, very clean and well-protected, and I think that, you know, we can't necessarily just change how big our property line is, you know, to accommodate that. Like, we would, according to this thing, we wouldn't have been able to keep them at all. And I'm sure there's a lot of places that have, like, a lot of people here that have properties that are around that size or less. And then another thing was, you said that, you know, no, no more than 12 female chickens to be kept as a, for the purpose of being a pet or providing eggs. But you, you said a lot of the bylaws were about it being agricultural, but nothing in this proposal mentions them being agricultural, like, it mentions them being pets. So like, some people, no one, no one regulates how many dogs people have, or how many cats people have. And like, the purpose of having pets, like, what's the purpose of the dog or the cat? So I think it's just, like, the lang, I think the language is what's bothering a lot of people. And also, like, the purpose of providing eggs, like, sometimes people do use them to, for meat, and so like, the lady that said, said that she cooked her rooster, she wouldn't technically be able to do that, because it's for the purpose of, it says that we can't use it to, it's only for, as a pet or providing eggs, and it's saying we're allowed to use it for meat. So I think it's just the language. And then the, like, the D and E that say how we should take care of the chickens, like, there's not laws about what we need to provide for a dog, or a cat, or any other pet or animal. I think it's just, I think there's just, I understand, like, you want to give people answers, but I think there's just too much language and too many restrictions in this one proposal. And then the keeping of roosters, we strictly prohibited. It's like, like she said, like, it would, you know, like, there's a lot of good purposes for roosters, you know, to protect the hens and stuff, but also, like, what if we want to be self-sufficient, and like, as our chickens age, you know, we want to raise our own chickens? Like, we literally wouldn't be able to do that if we don't have a rooster. Like, it would make us dependent on, like, tractor supply, or other places to go, to go buy-- Like, it would make us dependent on, like, tractor supply, or other places to go, to go buy chicks all the time. And then, you know, what if you get attached these little chicks, and then come to find out, like you said, they're roosters? And it's like, there's, if you, if you follow any of, like, the MA backyard chicken groups, like, people abandon their roosters all the time, or they are trying to give them away, because no one wants, wants them. And like, maybe you get lucky and get them into a sanctuary, but there's very limited sanctuaries in the state, or I think probably anywhere, because people, you know, you roosters, you can't have too many roosters, because they fight each other and stuff. So, that was one of the things. And yeah, and I don't know if we can get an answer for how many people actually complained about the noise of the roosters.
Well, so, yeah, I wonder if I, if I could speak to that, just to bring some perspective to that.
Quickly.
Okay, so, so since I've been in town, I've been to thousands of homes. You know, we have, what, 50, 5,600 single-family residences in town. And the last year and a week, I, we issue 900 some odd permits a year. I do two to three inspections on many of those. Been to a lot of places. I've not seen very many backyard hens at all. I've not seen, I mean, I've been to a lot of properties all around them. So, in my perspective, there, on the, based on the population, and the number of homes, there really aren't that many people keeping hens. The other thing is that if you were to be keeping your chickens per state best practices, they wouldn't be out running around, subject to being attacked by fox. You wouldn't actually need a rooster to protect them.
But we don't, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get into that. The question was, how many complaints have you had?
How many complaints? Well, to bring some perspective to that, and I think you probably know this, Russell, maybe, is that people in town don't like to complain. It's hard. So, if you were to say that one letter writer to a newspaper, this is common, if a letter writer writes, that represents 10 people or so. Given the small number of backyard hens that I have actually seen from going to all these properties, based on the number of complaints I've gotten, which probably six or seven.
Okay.
Seems like a small amount. These are the people who want to come forward and actually complain. You got a lot of people on the phone who say, "I don't wanna give my name, because I don't want my neighbors..." I say, one of my responses, "Have you gone over and talked to your neighbor?" "No, I don't wanna do that." So, you got people who are unhappy, who don't wanna complain, because they're just kinda sucking it up and saying, "Okay, I guess I'm just gonna put up with this."
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do you have some more?
Yes, sir, just a closing thing. I think that, I understand, like, there's no regulation, and I think the inappropriate answer to people that were asking, like, that were moving to town, like, what are the regulations? And instead of maybe telling them, "Go talk to the police or animal control," like, I would just say, "There's no regulation," because there really wasn't, and it's kinda nice. And then, you know? And there was one other comment. And I think it's just, like, I, I understand, like, you wanna have something to tell people. I just don't think this is the correct proposal. I think it, there's too much. So, I understand that maybe you wanna, like, yeah, just breaking, breaking it down a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to be heard?
I'll sign my name after.
Okay.
My, who should I name? My name is Heather Lieber. I live at 112 Hamden Road, in one of the areas that is A, or double A, or something that allows agriculture. And I've actually used my land for agriculture. I mean, I currently do. I have goats, and sheep, and rabbits, and chickens, and ducks, and dogs, and one cat. And I breed those animals, and I definitely need my roosters in order to make chickens, which I sell to other people, some of whom may have bought from me in this audience. If I were only allowed to have hens, I could not breed anymore. It would be restricting my, what I feel is my right to be able to practice agriculture. I appreciate that you want to allow more people to have hens in other areas of town. That would be expanding those who could have agriculture. I do not see any reason that we need to have a regulation about everything that people might do that could annoy their neighbors. Because, because then I'll start complaining about leaf blowers, chainsaws, and lawn mowers. I prefer sheep noise chewing on my lawn than lawn mowers. So, you know, I just, I'd rather that we not have regulations about these things, and let people practice agriculture. Let's follow state guidelines. I have a regular barn inspection by the animal control officer, who checks that I'm taking care of them with the proper housing and the right conditions. And I think that's adequate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll sign in in just a second. My name is Jennifer Comray. I live at 47 Breezy Knoll. I moved here a little over a year ago, and part of, one of the reasons I picked out my property is because there's a small chicken coop on it. I don't currently have chickens, but I hope to someday. And that was a big reason for me to pick that property and to pick this community. I used to live in Gulfport, Florida. In 2008 and 2009, we had to go through a long process of legalizing chickens, because I was cited for having a backyard chicken then. So, for about a year, I came to meetings like this, so we could finally get chickens legalized. Gulfport, Florida has tiny little lots. Most of them are 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. And they allowed 10 roosters per family. So, I think that these regulations and numbers are not representative of what, what necessarily could be done, or should be done. I also found that most of the opposition that we encountered was people who had farm animals as children, and had memories that they didn't like. And they brought those biases forward, instead of people who were current backyard chickens owners. So, I would urge you to consider people who currently have chickens as your main audience, as far as information goes. I would also say, I'd be concerned a bit that this is a solution looking for a problem, that respectfully, if this individual previously put regulations on chickens in other communities, that's coming in with a mindset of, "We need to have a regulation." And you got a 20,000-word answer to a simple question about how many complaints there were. So, I'll be doing a public records request, because even if people don't put in the amount of, you know, wanna give their name, surely there's records for how many complaints there actually have been. And we can bring back to the board an actual number that's discreet, that you can look at. Finally, I'd just like to say, the idea of grandfathered in, and it would seem so, being the advice that the board is being given about that, that's not legal advice. I'm an attorney. Go talk to an attorney for the, the town. That's not appropriate to be given out.
We will do that.
So, I would just urge you that, that this is a solution looking for a problem, that it's not necessary for this community, and you'll probably be turning away people if you actually have more regulations. If a family called to find out how they could have chickens here, if I bought a property because there was a chicken coop here, you might actually be turning away people if you regulate chickens more than what currently is going on. And you have a lot of support here. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter?
I'm Don Monti. I live at 840 Summers Road in East Long Meadow, Mass. I've had chickens for about a year and a half now. I have a small flock. I have six hens. Three of them are bantams, three are full-size, and I have one rooster. My rooster happens to be a bantam. So, do they crow? Of course they crow. But I also hear, like other people have said, there's plenty of dogs, and dogs make lots of noise. They will make noise at nighttime. They'll make noise bright and early in the morning. And yes, could we complain, but it's a dog. How many are you gonna regulate? How many animals that people have for pets? Are we gonna regulate the dogs? Are we gonna regulate the cats? I have almost seven acres of land. I'd like to be allowed to have more than 12 hens if I choose to. That technically would be all right. I have the lot size to be appropriate for that amount. And I just don't feel that you can regulate roosters. They're, they're beautiful animals. They, like someone else said, they're great for protection. They've protected my hens when I've allowed them to free-range. We had a hawk that came into our yard, and he alerted them, and everybody went right back to their run. So, they're fantastic farm animals, and it just feels like they shouldn't be regulated.
Thank you. Would you please sign in? Mr. Page?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna have a seat, because I've got a book to open up for you. Ralph Page, 137 Pease Road. So, I do have a couple questions, if the board decides to look favorably on this and make a recommendation on it. According to our zoning bylaw now, in District C, the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. So, if the minimum lot area is already 10,000 square feet for residential C, which is the smallest, I would ask that the waiver of site plan or site plan review be removed from the regulation. Granted, we have some lots that are smaller than that, but if we regulate it by the zone, instead of by the lot size, and hey, if it's smaller than this or that... And the reason I'm asking for that is, especially on a site plan review, it can become costly. There's, there's a permit fee, you know, your application fee, and then you have to go through an assessor to have everything put in its rightful spot and all, and you're gonna spend $1,000 or more for what, a couple dozen eggs? It makes no sense.
It might cost that much. Yeah.
Yeah, it probably would. So, I guess part of my question is, would the board consider if they choose to do this, which I'm hoping we just let it go, but based on the residential zone? Obviously, we know double A has the most space, C has the least. The board may consider saying, "Hey, in the residential C zone, you're allowed 12." But in the double A, where you have three, four, five acres, you're allowed 50. I don't know. And instead of just saying 12 across the board, maybe change the numbers based on the zone that you're in. As far as roosters go, I'm for them. We had a town meeting a long time ago, where a gentleman brought forwards to ban roosters. He had done a petition and all. There was no motion taken on it, because he withdrew, because everyone in the audience was against regulating the roosters. And then, the last thing I have is, I know this is for residential zones, but we also have houses that are located in the business zone. We also have houses in the industrial zone. Are we saying that they're not allowed to have hens and roosters? And I think it's something to consider. I'm also of the opinion that sometimes we try and over-regulate, and maybe just a little sign in the office that says, "Hens and roosters are allowed," would suffice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Rich Ewing. I live at 150 Meadowbrook Road with my family. Just some things, this is kind of an irritating thing, to be honest with you. I grew up, I'm 60 years old. I grew up raising chickens, pigs, ducks, all kinds of stuff. We moved to, we were living in Wilbraham. We moved down here. We bought a house five years ago today. And I told my wife, "The only reason we're gonna buy a, buy a house anywhere is so that we can have chickens, we can have pigs, we can do the things that I grew up doing, that my father grew up doing, and right down the line." See, this is, this is a, this isn't a new thing. This is something that has gone on through generations. Having chickens, having pigs, having ducks, having goats, having sheep. And the whole thing is, is you begin to try to take these things away from people, when people are raising things right, they're taking care of things right, you know? To me, it is, is an atrocity. Because once again, what you're doing is you're undermining the American way. It's not, not, don't look at me. You gotta leave. So, it just turns out, the whole fact is, when you begin to do that, and you begin to keep undermining, and undermining, and undermining, somewhere, something's gonna break. Okay, this is my perspective. Maybe, I don't know, people here, I hope they're with the same thing. And you begin to take the thing about a rooster. I have more than 12 chickens. We moved here five years ago. We did it. I built a beautiful chicken house that you could live in, for crying out loud, once I take the sawdust out. Really? Set yourself up, it's, it's beautiful, okay? It's a posted beam. So, you begin to take that, and the effort that people put in to have things, because we enjoy them. I don't know if people know many, they, there's not a whole lot of things that people can really enjoy today. Everything's being taken away, because, "Oh, we can enjoy that." Well, you know what? We're gonna take that away. Well, fine, that's fine. You begin to take so much, and things happen. The whole thing is, now you begin to have a rooster. I had, I'll, I'll admit it, I had two men, I had four of them. Okay? They, they never fought. They never carried on. They got, they got along. I think we had 30 hens at the time. So, they all got along with everything. They, they didn't, they weren't crazy, but I've gotten rid of two of them. Now, I have two, one that I rescued from a fox. I refused to get rid of that. And then you have another one that's protecting our chickens. Now, in Massachusetts, they say your chickens have to be free-range. Okay, that's obviously within a cage also, correct? He left.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're in a cage, because sometimes it's nice, and it's healthy for the birds, any animal, to get outside the cage and to begin to wander on land. I, I own my house, it's got, I think, an acre and three-quarters. We got plenty of room, and then Farmer John's got land that he has underneath the, we've got tons of property and land for chickens to just wander in. And I'll be honest, I've never had anybody with sold eggs. People love to come, just the, the whole community thing that comes with being able to do this and have a relationship with people. You know, I've got two daughters who are involved in this. They love to be able to have communication, meet people, come buy eggs, do things you enjoy. Just the whole experience of life. Instead of being boxed up into this thing where regulations begin to take you, I'll move. I'll move. Because, you know, I don't need the hassles of having somebody else. My brother lives in Tennessee. Never a word. Nobody says a word to him. So, it's really disappointing for me now, five years down the road. When I bought the house, I went to town hall, and I said, "This is what I wanna do. No problem. You can do anything there, except for bring materials in and sell them out. You raise it, you grow it there, you can sell it there." I don't do that, except for the eggs. But it's just the whole fact, you know, regulation now choking something else up and like. I find that wrong. Absolutely wrong. Imagine what we're really about sometimes. Thanks.
Mr. Gardner, leave. Let me just kind of not defend him, but put some perspective on this. So, he actually saw what he felt was something that needed some clarification within our zoning ordinance. He prepared it, and he presented it to this board. He's doing his job. He's not un-American. He's not a communist. He's not, you know, a...
Taking things away from the American people is un-American.
Sir.
It's like stealing your dog.
Sir, stop.
Okay?
Stop. He's not un-American, or whatever. He's doing his job that he is paid for. We are listening to you.
We are listening. You need to listen.
He brought it to this board, and we're having a hearing on it. So, who else would like to address this board?
I, I just have a question. Is there a question-answer portion of this? I've been through this back with the small businesses. I'm James Lynch, 92 Westwood Avenue. Because that way, we can ask the questions. People need the answers.
If, if we can answer the question, we will answer the, if we, if we know the answer, we'll certainly give it to you.
Okay, so, in the proposal, I'm sorry, I didn't read the proposal. 10,000, is there an above 10,000? Like, per 10,000 up? Do you understand what I'm saying? The quantity of hens and roosters you can have? And percentage-wise of the complaints and the problem? Because he obviously seen a problem that he seen coming, and he wanted to get ahead of the curve. Is there a, like, right now, the dog officer, I don't know if that's his name, but he comes, he inspects, he takes an evaluation each year of what you have, and passes you or fails you. Is there a more specific to the specific environment that we can have, instead of a general law laid down? It's just my question.
Billy, do you wanna address the 10,000?
Yeah, that's, I don't know that I understand your second question, but your first question, the, I believe, is how many hens? Or is there a proposal of anything above 10,000? So, I guess the proposal is for hens to be, a flock of hens to be allowed as of right. So, that means you can have it, no, no, you know, application required or anything. That's for lots that are 10,000 square feet or more. Anything below that would have to come to this board and just get a waiver of site plan review. We had two of them before this. We had two of them before this. That's kind of the process. You just tell them what you're doing, how many hens you have, that kind of thing.
So they'd have to get, like, Smith and Associates to do the whole?
No, 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 no. It's a waiver.
This whole thing is very expensive.
It's a waiver, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be done by a land surveyor. Waivers are typically a little bit less stringent, stringent, so we have, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Do you know how much the application fee is for a waiver?
$20.
$20. So it's $20. Pay us $20 to town. And then we just process that application. You come to one of these meetings, and then you essentially give us a little, like, parcel, this is where I want to.
Correct. Your plot plan drawed out on there very.
How many, how many square feet is it going to be? It's not that extensive.
Okay, I thought, I just wanted.
I do want to just say one thing in regard to that. The town and the state of Massachusetts does regulate dogs. We do have dog licenses. You have to, you have to register your dog every single year with the town. That's a thing. I'm not arguing with anyone. I'm just saying, that's a fact. And so your second question, could you repeat that again?
A dog officer comes and inspects your chicken coop, your chickens, to make sure that he made an environment, it's done correctly, clean water, clean food. Could it be evaluated at the dog officer's discretion? Because that's what I'm assuming a lot of people already have.
Yeah, I think that's what happens now. I'm not really involved with that process, so I don't know what the actual process is right now.
Keep an open mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Others that would like to be heard on this matter?
All right, I'll sign in. John Cooper, 142 Meadowbrook Road, my neighbor. A lot of people have kind of pontificated on their boards, so I won't get into that. I think one of the things that should be thought of, actually, in some of the ways, the regulations can make sense with, you know, how far you have to keep your, your hens and roosters away from your house for health and safety and things like that. But I think it's somewhat monolithic when you say 12 hens. Well, yeah, my neighbor and I, we have almost two acres. What's the difference between 10,000 feet, 10,000 and two acres? There's a big difference in the amount that you could actually have maintained safely and in a healthy environment. So I don't see that being taken into account, and I think it should be those one woman here, I believe it's you, that had seven acres. These are important things that actually should be addressed, not necessarily by zone, but perhaps by zone and by actual size is one item. The second item, and is, was by this Libra, who is one of my friends, is dealing with roosters themselves. Now, as we know, we need roosters to have baby chicks. By disallowing roosters, you're also disallowing 4-H families. One of the first things that you start with are chicks. And even in small areas, well, I can't have a cow, I can't have a sheep, but I can raise chicks. I can raise a rooster, I can raise chicks, I can raise hens, I could take them to 4-H areas. You're now saying you can't do that. You're saying to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, you can't raise these animals. You can't have a rooster to raise this. So I think that's something that should seriously be considered here for, what is necessarily the good of the people who do want to do this? Is it actually regulating at this level? Is it valid and important? I would agree that the idea of legislating for legislature's sake is a problem. I would also like to have an actual definition and our answer of how many complaints there are. There was equivocation back and forth. Is it six? Is it seven? Is it 60? We weren't given an answer. We were given six or seven, but there's no actual number. So what is the actual number? And is that, that number, is it outweighed by people complaining about dogs or other animals? We have no information on that. So, you know, that's not what I have to say.
So Mr. Gardner mentioned me, said that I would realize that people don't like to complain. What he was referring to is there are lots of people in town who complain about issues in town relating to zoning, but they don't want to piss off their neighbors, so they call me because I'm chair of this board. And would I talk to the building inspector to have it inspected? And I pass it along to him. So he is not wrong when he said that. So, so, all right, more testimony. Who would like to speak? Come on up.
Sorry for my casual attire. I came from a cross-country meet and didn't expect to run that late.
How'd they do? How'd they do?
They won. So I think they're reasonable chances again this year for back-to-back, which is awesome. So Erin Pratt Violet, I live at 2 Red and Drive here in East Long Meadow. We have had chickens for 10 and a half years, and I have a 10 and a half-year-old hen, which is extremely rare. They don't normally have. Thank you out loud on that because they're hard to keep. So, you know, one of the issues is we, our lot, I believe, is 10,044 square feet, so, you know, we would be, you know, theoretically within that. But the way our house is positioned, we're right on the 50-yard setback line, so there'd be nowhere to put it. If it's 25 feet from my house and then 25 feet from the property line, our chicken coop would be, you know, a quarter inch wide. Like, there's nowhere to put it from the setbacks. And, you know, even, and then the other thing I want to explain to you, if you haven't had chickens, is chicken math, which everybody here is going to laugh about. So they're a little bit addictive. Like, everyone thinks, like, oh, I'll get, like, four or six, and they're adorable. And then you're like, oh, my gosh, these are amazing. Like, they're fabulous animals. All of mine have names. They're 100% pets. Like I said, I have an almost 11-year-old hen. Like, I keep her forever. And so the issue with the numbers is, depending on where you get your chickens from, there's usually a minimum buying requirement. So it's a minimum of four, if not six, or if you order them from, like, Murray McMurray, I know, everyone's going to grow, and I get that, like, we hate the hatcheries, but the minimum is 20. So, you know, it's, they're difficult to, especially at certain times of year. Sorry, let me clarify. So if you want them early in the season, when it's still chilly, you have to order a minimum of 20 in order to keep them alive in the shipping process. So it gets a little tricky. Like, if you're down two hens, you're like, well, or two chickens, like, what am I, how do I get, how do I restore this to its, you know, the amount that I would like? So it gets a little tricky, and that tricky, and that's why you hear, you hear a lot of people say, like, they have weird numbers of chickens. Like, none of us started out that way. Like, none of us was like, I'm going to buy seven chickens. You buy six, and then you lose a couple because we have, you know, there, you know, various predators and things like that. So I just, that's chicken math for you. So it's, it's, that's, it's difficult to say I want exactly 12. It's not like a dog where you can go out and buy one more. You're stuck with these minimums. Anybody who's conscientious about allowing people to buy their chicks would want you to buy a certain minimum amount. So that's, you know, that's one of the issues. And then just, you know, the roosters, we did, so we were one of those people that we ordered chickens because I became a chicken snob and I wanted certain types of chickens. So we ordered them, and, you know, some of them turned out to be roosters. Now, some of them, certainly, I was, you know, able to rehome. It is incredibly difficult to find homes for roosters. Every sanctuary-type place that I called, which was at least four or five, said they were no longer taking roosters or whatever their situation was. I put notices up on, you know, various message boards, and this is several years ago. But one guy, you know, called me, he said, I'll take your rooster. I said, well, but what are you going to do with them? And he said, you don't want to know the answer. So, you know, they're very difficult to get rid of. So we ended up with two roosters, and one of them was admittedly a pain in the neck. He drove us crazy, and he chased my kids. We don't have that rooster anymore, but the one that we do have is incredibly sweet, and he's a wonderful protector of the flock. And he really, he very rarely crows. I have, obviously, I live in a residential area, I have a lot of neighbors, you know, and as a reference, one of them, we went to him, or a couple of them, but we went to them, and we were like, hey, are the roosters bothering you? And one of them goes, I love it! You know, he's like, it makes me happy, it's a regular farm noise, you know, whatever. Now I get that, you know, some people might, that might drive them crazy, but noise is a part of city life. And I grew up in a big city. If you had ever told me I would ever own a chicken in my whole life, I would have told you, you were insane. But they're really just wonderful creatures to have. So, you know, regulation, it gets very, very tricky. Right now, the answer is there isn't, isn't any. So anyway, that's.
Thank you. There was someone else wanted to come up?
My name is Magdalena Knash. I live on Maple Street, 24 Maple Street.
Sign in, please. Thank you.
So my thing is, I do understand about the roosters. I found myself with three, got to tractor supply, but I was hoping to get less chickens, end up with three roosters. And I was lucky enough to find them a place to be without being eaten. When I started the chickens, my family was small. I started with 10 chickens, and it was pretty sufficient, you know? Small family, eggs, we polish, we do everything by hand. We cook, we do everything, you know? So eggs are very important to us. I adopted kids, as I adopted kids, my family grew. Now I have nine kids, and I have around 30 chickens. The 30 chickens, because they don't lay every day, for us, it's like mornings, you know, 24 eggs to feed my family every morning. And that's like, what, two, three eggs per person? Eliminating the chickens to 12, that's not going to feed my family. I don't sell eggs. We do love them as pets, too. The kids have so much fun with them, but that's our food, and that's taking away our food.
Thank you. Thank you. There is no one else that wishes to speak? I would make a recommendation that we continue this. There are lots of questions. I want to thank all of you. You raised many, many valid points. By continuing this, we can get answers to as many questions as were asked. We can take a look at what your suggestions were, including just voting this down. But to do this right, we need to get more answers. And it would not be fair, one way or the other, to try to vote on this tonight when there's so much information that we still need to gather to be able to deliberate with. So I would recommend that we move to continue the public hearing to a date to be decided at a later date.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To continue the public hearing to Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 6:00 PM.
So I would, no, I would say we don't put a date.
Yeah, we can't put a date on it.
Because we don't know when we're going to get all the.
Yeah, we need the information.
We do, it is a public hearing, we have to do a date certain for now. We can always continue that as well.
So what's the first meeting in January?
January 2nd.
Is it January 2nd?
If we have. But we can.
So I make a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? So I'm going to recommend to everyone, the planning department has a very robust website on the town site. There is lots of information about when hearings are, when they take place, information about things that are being considered by this board. So please do your very best to look at that site so that you stay informed and you know when new dates are coming out. So I would just please advise you to do that. So on the motion to continue the public hearing, motions are made. And second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you all for coming.
Make a motion to adjourn, anyone? If anything, don't have anything, so if we want to go ahead and do it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion? Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.